Potentially one sign or going on right now and while that's taking place, I'll ask Ms. Marshall if you'll go ahead and call the roll.
Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Gaines.
Alderman Gaines said he is in transit and should be here shortly.
Baggett.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Apologies, President, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let me ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Taylor, followed by the pledge by Alderman Robinson.
Father, thank you for this opportunity tonight to be before our constituents. Give us the guidance, Lord, to make the right decisions in everything that we must do tonight. Lord, we pray for our soldiers overseas and for our families and friends all over the world. In Jesus' name we ask this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second move. On the motion to accept and file, the minutes as stated on that motion, Ms. Marshall?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Uh, let's, uh, we're looking at communications. Uh, we've got eight communications. Any council member care for any one to be pulled? I'll point out that, uh, we are filing the state of the city report. A lot of good things happened, uh, last year and I hope you had a chance to take a look at it. There was one typo, I think, uh, and Alderman Ross pointed out to us. We had our numbers somewhat reversed in terms of the lights out at Burns Park. Uh, I think we had, what, uh, some, I think we had the cars and the number of, of, uh, people who attended somewhat mixed up. So, we appreciate her catching that and, uh, we'll, uh, you know, consider that a typo and ensure that it's corrected. Uh, you know, I'd like, uh, to offer any of those that any council member wants to, uh, pull at this time after we hear-
Number seven, please.
Well, let's go ahead and get the blanket motion then.
All right.
So move.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Number seven?
Yes, please.
All right. Any other? Uh, if there's no other one-
Could we just mention five also?
Sure. Five, seven and five. Uh, uh, not being any others, all on the blanket motion except for seven and five. On the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Would you read number five by title and then, uh, we'll ask for any additional comments by Alderman Ross?
This is a communication regarding neighborhood beautification grant program.
Uh, do you want, uh, any further explanation or comments or you want the whole thing read?
No, I just wanted to point out that the grant request form is attached here and now it's complete. And some people were questioning, you know, how to go about it and now that we have the form, that they just pick up the form.
All right. Anybody that, uh, is interested in the neighborhood beautification grant program, uh, the applications are there. We're accepting them. Is there a deadline? I assume there is.
No, all year long.
Until they run out of money, right? Okay, well, there is a deadline. The amount of funds that are in the, uh, in the budget. Uh, on the motion to accept and file?
On the motion to accept and file, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Uh, read number seven by title and then let Alderman Witcher add to that if you would.
Ready?
Okay, just one second. Let me find it here. Okay. This is communication opposing the legislation and the reasons why the opposition.
Could you read the, uh, I guess down from, after the first sentence? Do I understand?
I understand that Northern Rock Council would soon consider legislation that would increase the number of changes permitted allowed on message board signs. Let me continue.
Keep on going.
Okay. I am against that legislation for the following reason. The city council has worked to beautify our city with our current science ordinances. Over the past few years, we have banned temporary trailer signs, made a move toward monument signs instead of pole signs and implemented other sign controls. Why would we want to take a step backward by allowing rapidly changing message board signs that clutter up the visual attractiveness of our streets? Number two, think what streets with dense business population like Camp Robinson Road, John F. Kennedy Boulevard, East Broadway, McCain Boulevard and others would look like if every business decided to install a message board sign and change the message every five seconds. The effect would be similar to the midway of a carnival. Sure, there are businesses that want a rapid change in business, a message board sign for themselves, but I assure you that they would not want every business on the street to have one also. Number three, if message board signs are good, what do you suppose Main Street near City Hall would look like if every business had a rapidly changing message board? Please don't open this can of worms. Number four, it is my observation from traveling to many other parts of the U.S. that the more restrictive a community is with their sign ordinances, the more successful the businesses appear to be. All businesses have a level playing field and the community is a more attractive place for consumers to come and spend their money. In the interest of making our city a beautiful city, which in turn helps all businesses, I urge you to vote against this legislation. Presley Milton.
May we accept and file? Mayor, if I may make a quick comment. Uh, Presley Milton lives in Ward Four and Shirley and I both know him. And I've made some arguments to you regarding our signs in the past and I can't think of anything that's, that's better suited and well put. And I, you know, I couldn't have come up with some of the things that he did. And I appreciate Presley taking the time to do that, so.
Motion made and seconded to accept and file. Any other comments on the motion?
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Uh, we have some young folks here in uniform and we certainly appreciate them. A longstanding friend of the community, Keith Dover. Keith, you want to come to the microphone and let us know, uh, why we're proud as we always are, but it's a special, uh, pride that we have in our junior ROTC shooting team. So with that, the microphone jury is now coming up and help you with what I know will be, uh, an opportunity that we're excited to be a part of.
Good evening, Mayor Hayes, members of the North Little Rock City Council and citizens of North Little Rock. My name is Keith Dover. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Public Relations Chairman for the American Legion Department of Arkansas and a former citizen of the Levy Community here in North Little Rock. On Saturday, February 21st, the 10th Annual Arkansas Junior Three-Position Air Rifle Championship was held here at the Fisher National Guard Armory right here in North Little Rock. This year was the largest group of junior shooters we have ever had with shooters from all four corners of the state of Arkansas. This championship was started in the fall of 1999 by the National Guard Marksmanship Training Center located at Camp Robinson here in North Little Rock. The Civilian Marksmanship Program, DACE and USJC's Shooter Education Program, National 4H Shooting Sports, the American Legion, and USA Shooting, the Olympic Shooting Governing Body. Three-position sporter and precision air rifle shooting represents the fastest growing and largest segment of youth sports shooting events in our country. The American Legion sponsors these programs of marksmanship and gun safety education for Arkansas youth. As part of the program, the tournament provides competitors an opportunity to test their marksmanship skills, ability and competition with other junior competitors throughout the nation. Any student, any student currently enrolled in elementary, middle or high school or equivalent educational programs such as homeschooling is eligible to compete in this program. Based on the results of this match, the top team in each category will be invited to attend the 2009 National Junior Olympic Three-Positioned Air Rifle Championships in July. And tonight, it is my distinct honor and privilege to introduce the North Little Rock Junior ROTC Senior Instructor and Rifle Team Coach, Lieutenant Colonel Artis Lofton, who will introduce his award-winning rifle team members and tell you about their recent accomplishments, which is available to the public if you want to check it out on the American Legion Department of Arkansas website, www.arlegion.org. That's www.arlegion.org. Congratulations to Colonel Lofton and I'll let him make some comments.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. I'd like to introduce, uh, the members of my teams. Uh, Ms. Cassie Branham, she's a junior. She was the overall top shooter at the competition. She won first place standing prone and second place in the kneeling. Cass is also an international baccalaureate student, which is doing very well in school. The next one is Hannah Weatherford. She is the team captain. She is a outstanding student. She maintained a 3.95 grade point average. And she also won the second place overall top shooters, second place standing and third place kneeling. The next shooter is Cayman Esther. He's a sophomore with a grade point average of 3.0. He won third place top overall shooter and third place prone. My next shooter is Ms. Cory Washington. She is a sophomore as well. She has a 3.5 GPA and she won first place in the kneeling position. Next shooter is Mr. Tyrell Mitchell. He, he's a junior with a 3.5 grade point average. He won second place in the prone position and third place in the standing. The rest of the shooters who couldn't win any position because these shooters won everything, there was no other categories to win, so we were shooting against ourselves after that point, are Ms. Amber Watson. She is a junior, which has a, she has a 3.3 GPA. Uh, Mr. Kalen Starr, he's a junior. He had, he takes AP courses and he has a 3.4 GPA. And our last student, our freshman, Ms. Stevie Faith, she's a freshman. Now, we have won every competition this year. We've not lost a competition. We only lost one match this year and that was in the state of Missouri and we lost to the national champions. And so, we're hoping to go to, uh, Ohio this year, Camp Perry, and hopefully we'll win it if we can get the funds to go. And, uh, these are outstanding students. Not only can they shoot well, but they, as you can see, they do well in their studies as well. And it takes a lot of hard work and I want to thank you for letting us come down.
Colonel?
Thank you.
Colonel, I might point out the gender differentiation here on our representation. The young ladies, we certainly are proud of y'all as well as our minority of young men who have scored in the competition. That's kind of exciting and, and very pleasing. And Colonel, if I could go ahead and present to each of you, and I think we've got these for the, the top shooters here, if I could, on behalf of a grateful community in not only what you do, uh, day in and day out, but creating the leadership that I know so many of us are going to depend on as we move into our social security years, we're looking forward to y'all taking over and we're very proud of what you're doing in the ROTC program. I received my commission as a second lieutenant through ROTC at University of Arkansas, so go Army. With that, if I could present this to you and I'll present each of you, uh, those of you who are successful, Colonel Artis Lofton Day, in honor of the North Little Rock High School Junior ROTC, M.M. Elbert, Team One winning first place in the 10th Annual American Legion Junior Three-Positioned Air Rifle Championship. And, uh, and let me just wait till we get all of these presented. Cayman Easter, Cayman, once again, I shook your hand once, we'll do it another time. Cory Washington, there we go. Is it Cory? That's right, good. Cassandra Brahman?
Brandon.
Brahman?
Brandon.
Brandon?
Branum.
Branum. Okay, I'm sorry. There we go. We got you three times there. All right, Hannah Weatherford, Hannah, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, Tyrell Mitchell. There we go. All right, let's give them all real thank you. Seen as much hardware in any one group as I have now and, uh, and I'm sure you'll add to what it was going to continue to be a growing trophy case. We thank y'all and we're very proud of you. Thank you for coming down. Uh-huh. And Keith?
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. It's good to see everybody again. And, and once again, the results are out there. They're amazing. Go out there to that website and you'll see North Little Rock, North Little Rock, North Little Rock, all the way down the list. It's really amazing. We're really proud of these kids.
Well, thanks to Legion and thank y'all for what you do. We appreciate y'all and thanks, everybody. Uh, we, uh, tried something, uh, let's go ahead and do the special call and then as we set up, understand we're going to do the video for our police and fire. Who's, uh, is somebody setting that up now? If it's not, uh, we're going to do that in just a second. So, Mr. Sisson, would you check and make sure that that's ready? Let's go ahead and let me introduce this. We're going to go ahead and do the special call. One of the things that we tried in consultation with the city attorney's office, uh, is to, perhaps adopt a procedure that we're going to formalize, uh, you know, with comments, uh, you know, from the council in terms of communicating by email. And, uh, and, uh, essentially the way we're going to propose to do it is similar to what we did with regard to a notice requirement. Uh, it certainly fits under the umbrella that's statutorily permitted. Uh, and, you know, we obviously want to ensure that everyone has a, a, you know, adequate notice, which is part of, of the requirement under state law. Uh, but at the same time, you know, historically when we've gotten out special calls, we always distribute them by our police officers. Of course, we notify the press and, uh, and this may very well be a way that we want to ensure there's notification, but it might reduce that time requirement when it's perhaps not necessary. Now, you know, we're asking everyone as, as we did in, you know, uh, Jason's communication to respond. Uh, and where you don't respond, then I think it would be our intention to actually try to dispatch an officer. Now, again, we want to, uh, go ahead and, and open it for comment. But before I publish a special call, maybe we can go ahead and make some comments on it and then we'll go forward with this. I think virtually everybody responded. Jason, you want to give us a little, you know, any kind of other comments before we go ahead and enact or work on the legislation?
Our, our response time on this was, was actually very excellent. You know, it, it saved having to send a police officer out. You know, that's a task that was avoided and it's a time-consuming task for a police officer to go from house to house. If, if there could be some procedural rule that city council could agree to as for email notification, then we could just put a rule in place. Uh, I like maintaining the rule of 24 hours notice for the police officer just when short, there is short notice and something, emergency has happened. Other than that, if we could just have an email policy of a 72-hour prior notice that gave everybody time, gave you some more time to be able to check your email. And, you know, the way that I think about it from a practical standpoint is we, normally anytime we have a special call coming out, they're out by Friday afternoon, by close of business, which would give plenty of time to get notice over the weekend of anything that was coming up on Monday. Uh, so that's just kind of the thought process right now. It's a procedural rule. It's subject to whatever the council desires. But, uh, I think since we have this tool of notification that we can use and save man-hours by using it, that it's worth discussion and, uh, and hopefully adoption of some, some rule that we can use for predictability.
Let me, if I could, before, like I said, I bring it up, I just open it up for any comments that you want to make, uh, good, bad or improvements. Uh, and, you know, one of the things, let me just refresh a little bit of history. Uh, I know when I got here, we did have our filing deadline originally was 12 o'clock noon on Wednesday, uh, which was, you know, obviously one day shorter. Uh, you know, the North Little Rock Times, you know, comes out on Thursday and there was a request made that was honored by the council about putting it a day earlier. So, their deadline then at that point, and I think perhaps still is, uh, noon on, on Wednesday. Uh, and, you know, that gave them sufficient time to, to, uh, digest, for lack of a better phrase, whatever we had on our agenda. And so that was the reason that the deadline was moved back, uh, 24 hours. Uh, this is something that, you know, while we do reasonably often, it's not, you know, necessarily a special call every time. This one was timely in that it needed to be done and, uh, and, and so, you know, unless there's any, well, it's open for comments. Anybody got any thoughts on it, uh, other than that?
Just one administrative comment.
Okay.
I got, I think that's a great way of, of notifying us that there's a special call, but I think there's a little bit of confusion about whether or not we should have printed our own copy. And in the future, if we do it this way, online, via email, whichever, I think, uh, we need to be instructed as to whether or not we need to print our own copy. I didn't see, I didn't catch that.
And, and I didn't put an instruction in there. I, I can, uh, but I think if you, whether you read it online or you, or you print it, I think is a matter of personal choice. Uh, if, if the council thought that it was important that everyone printed it, then of course we'd put the instruction in there.
Yeah, and the past, when they delivered us a, uh, personal copy to the home, to the house, I think, I, I can't recall a time when there wasn't another copy here on the, on my desk.
Yeah.
The night of the actual council meeting.
And that's probably a good point. That's, and that's a good point. And, you know, and perhaps that's the procedure that needs to be in place, that if we're going to do email notification, that a hard copy should be on your desk when you arrive at city council. I mean, I think that's, that's a reasonable request.
Okay, 'cause I know, yeah, I think this is a easy, a better way of getting in touch with us, 'cause there's been times when we've had special calls and it's been on Saturdays the police officers tried to get in touch with me and I may be, uh, waste high water upon Little Red River or something, you know, and not get in touch with me, so.
Well, this is one way that, wherever you happen to be, if you have a computer with you. And speaking of computers, uh, I know that we're working, still working with, uh, the city clerk's office in terms of providing, uh, a, a, a computer to essentially go paperless along, I think with a printer. I know Ms. Whitby's been working along with the city clerk's office. And I, I know that we've enlisted some of our IP, uh, IT people, rather. And I think we're looking at perhaps giving several choices as to what you might want that fit within the city's framework. I think that we're going to need to probably stay with a Sony or, or, I know that one, you know, one inquiry had been, had been made with regard to a Mac, I think, and I don't know that that's compatible with our, our system. So, we're going to try to give you several choices and, uh, and I would assume that that's going to be on a fairly short fuse. Do you have any, you know, I know Ms. Whitby's not here. Do you have any update on that? Because I know she was working with Terrence Williams in the electric department.
Yeah, Doc.
Okay. Uh, so that, uh, do you have any?
Well, the only other thing I'd like to add is, is I think part of the big question is, is notification effective on the email when I hit the button send? That's going to be part of the question. Because if we come about on Friday and I hit the send button and the machine, you know, the computer will give me a receipt, email delivered to the accounts. But it's not going to, I don't know when it's been opened. I don't know when it's been looked at. The way, that's why we use this procedure this time to say, affirmatively respond back. And everybody was really good about responding back, but we had a lot of lead time. If we were publishing a special call on Friday, we wouldn't have that much lead time where people couldn't, you know, the alderman couldn't respond necessarily affirmatively. Uh, I'd like to have the comfort of knowing that I've made effective service when I've hit the send button and sent it to the accounts. There's, the, the city account and the account that's designated by the alderman that they want it sent to.
What, remind us, what state statute? Uh, if I remember, there are some notifications. I know some of them have to do with Freedom of Information Act and, and required notification to the media. Do we have any statutory, uh, statutory language other than our own rules that govern us?
The statutory language out there just says that the city council must adopt its own rules. Of course, there's the FOI rules.
Right.
That require notification, like you pointed out. But then, as far as special meetings go, which essentially anytime you have a special call, it is a special meeting.
I think there's a three hour, now, let's, let's talk a little bit about FOI too, if you can blend that in. I think there's a three hour notice on special meetings and then there's a 24 hour notice that we have to wave if we try to call something within that time period. Now, am I dancing around?
I think our 24 hour rule is self-imposed. Of course, the notification for the press, that's state law, you know, uh, for their notification. The notification that we have for each other for when we're going to meet, uh, that's a self-imposed rule to give the alderman enough time to be able to discuss the matter with constituents, think about it, uh, and be prepared to, uh, discuss and vote when they come to city council. But those are self-imposed rules. We just have to have rules to have a special meeting and, and we've created those rules. They'd require some modification if we wanted, uh, to use email as a standardized form of notification instead of as an alternative. Just kind of the way it's being done right now. It's just being done as an alternative.
Well, let me, let me make this suggestion. In order to try to simplify, if we're going to do 72 hours, I would suggest that we consider the 72 hours, you know, and at 72 hours, I'd almost rather do close of business on Friday, which is, you know, 4:30 for us on Friday afternoon. Now, uh, you know, that, that if any notification, you know, that goes out before close of business on Friday, you know, essentially meets, you know, the, the notice requirement upon being sent. And, uh, and, uh, you know, we also are going to, at the term, ask for a response. Uh, and if we don't get a response, uh, you know, then, well, I don't know.
Well, 'cause that's the question, is what happens if we don't get a response? Then when are we going to dispatch a police officer to, to make that service?
That's a good point. Uh, Alderman Ross? I'm sorry, then Alderman.
Well, the comment I was going to make is, you know, you, you can ask, you can put a tag on it and ask when it is open, you receive a receipt. And, you know, to me, that would be the same thing if it was going to our email city accounts in particular.
And, and it will, I can get, you know, the read receipt, the open receipt. It, you know, I can get inundated with receipts and the machine will let me know when all those things happen. I guess the, the question for us is, what if that thing doesn't happen? What if it's not open?
What if they're not home? You know, what if they're not in front of their-
And so, if we adopt the rule-
What if your granddaughter opens your email? I mean-
If we adopt the rule, it's the alderman committing to say, you know, when I've got a city council meeting coming up on Monday, I'm going to check my email over the weekend.
Alderman Ross?
Well, I think that we just probably need to put, if you have not received a receipt by Friday, say Friday at 3, Friday at 4, then you'll dispatch a police officer.
And just follow the same procedure like this one was?
Yeah.
I mean, and, and I can. It would just, it requires us to get the special call out earlier.
Right.
Tell you what, uh, let us take a shot at drafting something and, uh, feel free to make any comments to the city attorney and then we'll have something in front of us that we can amend or, you know, clarify. And, and I think we pretty well feel we're all covered, you know, for this special meeting. So, if anybody's got any thoughts, we'll sort of kick it around and see if we can recommend something and then, you know, we'll have something in front of us the next council meeting.
I just had one other comment. With so many, I know that there's a few of us, I don't know how many do, but, you know, with our email being forwarded to our phone, we receive it much faster than dispatching an officer. I mean, I had mine immediately, wherever I am, you know, I've got my phone basically, hopefully. And, and I have it then, so it's, it's much quicker.
Uh, some of the responses to email notification were far faster than I could ever, you know, at light speed get a police officer out there to make notification. And I already had responses coming back. Got it, thanks, got it, you know. Uh, and, uh, so in, in a lot of ways, it's even better notification than it is sending a police officer.
All right, well, we'll take a shot at it. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I think one of the other comments that was made, uh, is, it certainly, you know, uh, makes sense. And that is, to the extent that we do it by email, that there'll be hard copy waiting on you this, you know, in the evening when you arrive for city council meeting and just in case you choose not to print it or leave it paperless or however you want to do it. But it's probably a good, uh, you know, a, a good comment too. Uh, okay, let's publish a special call. Ms. Marshall?
The purpose of this email to advise you that Mayor Hayes has called a special meeting on the North Little Rock Council at 7:05 PM on March 29, 2009, at, at City Hall, Council Chairman of North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. Authorizing the mayor to request the University of Arkansas at Little Rock to conduct a feasibility study on the, on the possible merger of North Little Rock wastewater and Sherwood wastewater and for other purposes. Sponsored by Mayor Hayes.
I'll move for adoption, but I'm sure there's probably going to be some discussion. Sure. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me, uh, I know we have, uh, been involved in litigation. I think there may even be, if Gary Mills is over there and I think I saw Gary a little earlier, if you, oh, there, you're right here. If you want to come up to the microphone. Gary, is there still litigation pending, uh, at this point? I, I thought there was. Uh, I know that we had litigation with the city of Sherwood regarding- regarding franchise on our electric service, and, and if y'all might recall, we resolved that, at least some might recall, we resolved that last year when we entered into a settlement that, you know, essentially gave us a franchise until 2015, I believe, the middle of the year at 2015. You know, we have been providing, and I'm not sure exactly what percentage, but what percentage of Sherwood do we serve wastewater?
Mayor, it's a difficult answer, because it's, it, we serve it in a number of different ways.
Right, we serve it by, by, you know, distribution and processing, or, and then some we just do the, you know, but...
That's right. The part of Sherwood known as original Sherwood, the, the city maintains a collection system and pay us to treat their wastewater. There are North Little Rock customers that live in Sherwood, and then there are SID customers, and then there are customers that Sherwood maintain their collection system and treat the wastewater. In that sub-basin, there are about 27% of customers served at our White Oak Treatment, not White Oak, but Five Mile Creek Treatment Plant.
Needless to say, we serve a reasonable part of Sherwood, if not a substantial.
About 8,000 customers.
Okay, of about 16,000 customers that would be there, or how many?
No, that's a combination of what we do and, and Old Sherwood as well.
Nonetheless, it's a, it's a respectable part, and, and, and as such, there's some, and without going into any really of the details of litigation, there's some, we'll say, feelings that we're being a little bit partial in terms of treating or using some pipelines or, or distribution.
That's true.
If I remember right, with regard to the litigation. And, and, you know, so we've been sort of talking a little bit over the last six, seven, eight months, is that?
Yes, and, and kind of concentrated on those conversations over the last three months.
Last two to three months. But there's been a, you know, some contact in, in terms of, of whether or not there might be a pathway that would be mutually beneficial, both to Sherwood and North Little Rock. And, and, you know, let me refresh our memory, too, again, in the area, in terms of our Little Rock's merger with, North Little Rock's merger with Little Rock wastewater, uh, water department, forming Central Arkansas Water. And that model, you know, whereby you had a commission that was composed of people from both sides, somewhat, you know, based on, on sides, with the majority being with the larger customer base. But that model has worked very well, at least as far as I'm concerned, in, in the formation of Central Arkansas Water, and, and giant strides have been made on a regional basis to provide us with that utility service for, you know, years to come. And we also did, at, at the authorization of both city councils, Little Rock and North Little Rock, with a potential study concerning the merger of wastewater departments, and the report came back favorable, obviously, in the water issue, but I won't say unfavorable, they just said that there weren't enough benefits with regard to a potential merger of the two wastewater utilities, Little Rock and North Little Rock, that would necessarily enhance the benefits to the customers enough to where they would recommend that we do it. So, they didn't recommend against it, they just didn't recommend for it, if I remember the, the report. And, and obviously, something that, you know, would come back somewhat neutral, we always, you know, look to maintain as much of our own ability to, so to speak, drive our boat as, as, as we can. So, those discussions, now, Gary, I'll let you add any, and then certainly the council can ask any that they want, that, you know, that we perhaps follow a similar pathway to what was done with the study of Little Rock, North Little Rock wastewater, and the water, and, and, and ask, and so that's the only thing that the, the resolution is doing, is simply asking UALR to conduct an unbiased study and to make findings and/or recommendations if they choose. Doesn't commit us to do anything, it doesn't commit Sherwood to do anything. Essentially, it gives us, you know, an opportunity, and again, this is based on whether or not UALR would accept it. I've had occasion on two separate times to visit with Joel Anderson, who's the chancellor of UALR, to let him know, one, that we were considering this, and two, you know, after Sherwood adopted this resolution at its last council meeting, which was two weeks ago, and to let him know that, subject to this council's action tonight, that I felt we would be, again, asking them to consider doing a third study with regard to, you know, the two that they've done before, and recalling, you know, what we hope that that would be another positive response. And, and he indicated to me that they would be very receptive to anything the two cities requested. So, essentially, that's, that's where we are. One other thing that's somewhat interesting, and I just learned this today, we had another meeting over at Metro Plan, and I don't know if you were even aware of this, Gary, so I'll mention this, because apparently it took place somewhere in the Reagan era, and this was before even McKenzie had gotten, had gotten there. But in their archives, somewhere, I guess in the 80s, there was some kind of review or study done about the merger of the two utilities, and they still have, you know, that documentation. And it apparently came back favorable. Now, beyond that and the comment, you know, that was just made to me a little earlier, you know, Jim indicated that if, you know, if we went forward, that that material perhaps could be useful for, you know, the UALR committee if, again, they accepted our request upon this council's approval. So, with that, let me just open the, the floor for any questions or comments. Again, just in summary, this is just authorizing us to request, beyond that, nothing more. We received a response back, then it's up to us to, to discuss a potential format for possible jointer. Now, one other thing that I want to bring to your attention, and that is that, that we concluded, and this is the legal counsel for North Rock wastewater, that it would more than likely require some enacting legislation. And I know that Gary and I have, have been working together over the last several weeks. One, you know, Gary and his staff, along with the legal counsel, prepare legislation that would essentially be the umbrella that would authorize this. And I've been in contact with our two state representatives, and our Senator, Mary Ann Salmon. I hadn't had a chance to talk to Senator Steele, but I would assume he would certainly be supportive. And Mary Ann, I know, has filed it in the Senate. I think the consideration is to address it there and then go over to the House, so with that authorizing legislation. So, again, no commitments on anybody's part, just so that we could have this moving forward. I think today is the last day, if I'm not mistaken, that new legislation can be filed. So, we needed to have that in the mill. So, again, nothing presupposed, no commitments made, just one step at a time, and, and somewhat fact-finding. Gary, you got any other comments for you?
Mayor, you've said it all very well. I would have tried to say the same thing, but you've done, you've said it all.
Any questions?
Just, just one quick one. Why, the way I read the newspaper article, Sherwood's rates are much less than ours, or are they about the same?
No, they're, they're a good deal lower.
Why would, why would they be interested in doing this?
Well, there are lots of reasons. One is, they've been recently given a consent administrative order. Their plants are, are out of compliance, and they're having trouble with manhole overflows, and somebody's got to fix that. Sherwood Sewer Department consists of six employees, one vector, one backhoe, I assume to be a rubber tired hoe, and, and a dump truck. And those people work part-time sewer, part-time public works. So, they don't have the personnel, they would have to invest in, in, you know, a number of people.
Mr. Mills, would we take the 8,000 that we've got now, would we add the 8,000 in new Sherwood to that and get all 16,000 homes that we're talking about doing?
I'm not certain that I understand the question, but the customers, there will not be an addition of customers, they're, they're there.
Okay, the same 8,000 we've got right now?
Same 8,000.
Merge that together. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Ross?
And the cost of the study is free.
I mean, that's what we're, there may be, I don't know that they've charged us in the past. Mr. Sisson?
The three that, that I've been associated with have all been free. And, and one thing I'd like to point out, too, a lot of people think going into this thing that it's some students, or maybe even grad, graduate students who do these studies, but it's not, it's professors there. Last year, the, the, the last time we had one of these done, Dean Gollner headed that commission, and, and it was very diverse and very comprehensive.
They, without a doubt, in fact, Joel Anderson, if I'm not mistaken, was the one that himself was the chairman of the study for the jointer of Central Arkansas Water.
I think so. He did make the presentation at, at the meeting that I attended.
And so, they, they really take this very seriously, and rest assured, it's not preordained in terms of what they conclude. And they are very thoughtful and, and spend a great deal of energy and effort on analyzing this. So, again, it's very fact-finding and very talented from the faculty and, and staff of UALR if they accept us. I mean, if they agree to do this. Yes, ma'am?
One, just another question, because I talked to you earlier in the week. Sherwood, Gravel Ridge, Runyon Acres, is this included in the study, or would this, I know it was at one time in the previous study.
I expect that they will consider those two communities, but right now, it, they would not be a part of the merger.
Oh, okay.
You know, Gravel Ridge was recently annexed into Sherwood, but their sewer system is owned by an SID, and so, it's, it's not part of the consideration.
I mean, that's not to say that something couldn't happen, but at this point, the only thing we're asking is for Sherwood, and, and that we will be asking, you know, at least we're asking for approval from the council, is, is for North Little Rock and Sherwood to be involved in requesting that study from UALR. And again, that's...
When, when our Five Mile Creek plant was built, it was built with, with the idea that it would be a regional treatment plant, and that region would include both Runyon Acres and Gravel Ridge, should they want to come into it, they could be served.
And the sizing was done with that in mind, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right. Now, but we're near capacity at our plant now, and we'll probably need modification, whether or not they come. Mayor, Alderman Gaines, I, I wanted to say one more thing about the rates, and why Sherwood would want it, even though their rates are much lower. When I had a recent visit with Mayor Hillman, she shared with me that they have to subsidize sewer rates there, so they're artificially low, and don't, don't do what they need to do.
One of the things, Gary, and I'm sure we can get into this in more detail later, but one of the things that, that I know Sherwood did is pass a penny sales tax.
That's right.
At one point, that accumulated some dollars that went toward, you know, their wastewater effort. And I think that, if I'm not mistaken, is over with. I'm not...
It, it has sunset.
It's sunset, and so, to that extent, that there's some, some funds, I assume, that are being utilized, that are, are finite in terms of their availability. Now, I don't know whether that helps with the rates.
They still have, I've heard two numbers, nine million or 10 million in the, in that fund. And what they've used prior to now is basically extensions of mains out toward Gravel Ridge and Runyon Acres.
So, all this would, again, all this would come about as part of the, I mean, again, we're just asking for the study, and, and, and once you, you know, once it comes back with the analysis, if it is indeed, you know, favorable, and that's when you start getting into the discussion about how you'd actually try to move a, a merger forward, if, if, if both councils indicate they want to step forward at that time. Alderman Height?
I just wanted to thank Gary, he and I spent about an hour together, me asking him a lot of questions. And one of the things that, or a couple of things that came out in our discussion today was, is that whether or not we merge with Sherwood, they're probably gonna have, have to have a rate increase. They do have about nine million in a pool out there that they got from their sales tax to update their facilities. But, and you outlined several reasons why Sherwood would, would want to do this, and a couple, three or four reasons why city of North Little Rock would want to do this. The, the thing, though, that I did remember you saying today, though, if down the road we do merge, there's not gonna be any, much of any financial cost on the city of North Little Rock to merge with Sherwood's facilities.
I, I don't see it happening. We've already got rates in place for the next three years, and I, I don't think there would be a resident in North Little Rock that would recognize the difference in, in a merged utility in the one we have now. Service would not change.
One of the things, though, I think that is advantageous to us, would be a, a stable customer base. Part of the litigation, you know, is because of differences of, of opinion as to, you know, the delivery of certain service aspects, and I think there is potentially some move that Sherwood would want to totally separate from us.
There's been a, a threat of that for a number of years, and this merged utility would stabilize the customer base. And I, I have been a proponent of this for some time.
Well, the one thing I wanted to try to make sure, that, that this is, this would by no means be a one-sided, you know, road that we'd follow. There would be, before both, you know, communities would be inclined to go forward, it'd be my feeling that both would conclude that this would be a win-win, and that the, because the thing that I see, if indeed, you know, the study comes back, you know, in a positive way, is number one, a stable customer base, and number two, you know, because of the, the size of the facilities, it's a whole lot easier to run one reasonably sized plant than several that are almost parallel in terms of some of their service issues. And, and so, I, you know, I really do think that if, unless there are things out there, that this very well could be a two-sided street, that both of us would see significant advantages in the long run and in the short run.
Gets us out of a...
That'd be beneficial to both customer bases.
Gets us out of a couple of court orders, too, right?
There's a court order that's been in effect since 89 that determines an area that's Sherwood customers, and outside that area are North Little Rock customers. That would go away. We've currently got another litigation, they've accused us of trespassing, and that amounts to wastewater coming out of North Little Rock and traveling through Sherwood to get to our Five Mile plant. That would go away.
But it still takes approval by both city councils, some.
Yes, it does.
If, if, if the study recommends it, some.
Well, if the study recommends this, then there'd have to be discussions on the vehicle for merger, like the creation of a unified board, and the representation on that board, and who appoints the board. And, I mean, again, that there, there are a thousand questions that need to be asked, and, and more answers that need to be given. So, I come back to tonight, and it's good that we started it with, with this, this kind of inquiries. But, you know, this is just one thing we're asking for, and that's the ability to ask UALR jointly to conduct a study. For your time. Motion made and seconded. On the motion?
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, has anyone signed to speak up for any legislation that's on the agenda?
I have one on, oh, 0942, one, can't pronounce his last name, it's weird.
All right, whoever signed up, come on up the microphone.
Yep.
And what was the legislation?
0942 Resolution, oh, 0942.
Okay.
It's an agreement for rehabilitation property.
That's my legislation, okay. Yes, sir. You want to identify yourself, and feel free to comment.
Mayor?
If I can, this was, he's trying to, he bought a piece of property that the city had previously condemned. He's the owner. I've met myself, Mr. Wadley, given us a deposit if the council agrees to allow this. He's met with me, and so, in case you had any questions, that's why he signed up, your honor.
Okay, well, you, I mean, is this, this is an understanding at your office negotiated?
Ah, yes. And you recall, this was a property that we condemned, the previous owner was in bankruptcy, they did not have the financing. This gentleman came through, knew about the condemnation, he's been here before, and now he owns the property, he's gotten a loan for it, he's met with myself. And as I say, Mr. Wadley, we feel pretty comfortable, he's gonna get this property back up, and his family's gonna move in.
My name's on it, so your office and our code office is recommending that we move forward with it. All right, so go ahead, feel free.
Okay. I need time only. Where's my deadline for this, finish?
Six, six months.
Six months from where? From...
It's approved tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, I tell you what, in deference to the long time you've spent in the microphone, unless there's objection, we'll go ahead and call this out.
I don't know somebody.
Mr. Baggett, you have a question?
You're doing, you're doing a...
You're doing a good job over there.
Thank you.
Good job. It's looking a lot better.
Thank you. We're working inside, try to finish as soon as we can.
Well, like I said, in deference to the long time at the microphone, Ms. Marshall, go ahead, and let's call this up.
Do we have a...
R-0942, move for adoption.
Second. Yeah. R-09, you got it. Have you read it?
She needs to read it now. I have to read. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement to rehabilitate property located at 906 West 43rd Street in the City of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Motion made. Second. On the motion.
On the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't look over to the right. Yes, go ahead.
I've noticed that the House, you've already got some new windows and doors in the House. Looks really good, and you've done this before. We all have approved this. I think it shows good faith in that you're going to do a good job, so if you have an open house when it's done.
I hope. I invite everybody to hope we finish. I hope in the next couple weeks.
Good. Thanks.
Hold on, Ross?
I'm just curious, is this going to be your primary residence, or is this for rental property? This will be your residence? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. On the motion.
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
We're there. No, we've adopted it, and we appreciate you making this your home. We are excited about opportunities like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. Have a good night.
Okay. That's the only signups that we had?
Only agenda, and we do have comments, public comments.
Okay, well, that's hearing a little bit. All right, let's go to the old business, unfinished.
Okay, let's see. R-09, R-09, Alderman Gaines.
Please pull that down.
I'm going to read it.
Draw it. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to call it. This is...
Mayor, were we going to watch the video from the police and fire?
Oh.
Your good point. I'm sorry, Alderman. Richard, is that ready? Okay, well, lights, action, popcorn, let's go. Uh...
I hear the nights are long, days are long. I think of you. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. All the cars I've drawn, it's a rough hand on. I straighten my back in. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. Sometimes it feels so far away. I'm working on a dream. I know it will be mine someday. Rain pouring down, I swing my hammer. My hands are rough from. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. All the trouble can feel like it's here to stay. I'm working on a dream. I know it will be mine someday. Rain pouring down, I swing my hammer. My hands are rough from. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. I'm working on a dream. I can feel so far away. I'm working on a dream. All the love can feel someday. I'm working on a dream. I know it will be mine someday.
opportunity that was supported by several of our businesses, the North Little Rock Chamber, and several were a part of what has grown to be an annual event honoring some of the men and women in our police and fire departments, and we certainly send our appreciations along with those who were honored, to all who serve in those two departments of the city. With that, I think we're now ready to go to the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, and let me hold one more time. R-02, R-0902, Ms. Marshall, and we'll try to see if I can inspect that alley now that the weather's running a little bit more favorable.
Did he pull R-909?
Uh-huh.
You pulled that one? I did. Learned a lot about C-M. Thank you. You're welcome.
Next item?
R-0911, Alderman Gaines and Baggett.
And we will vote on it next time.
Next item, and I think we're ready.
Two weeks now.
Yeah.
Okay. Move on.
Beheld, Ms. Marshall, let's go to new business.
R-0932, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizing Lenin Parker to the unexpired term of Greg Gillen on the North Little Rock History Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Parker here. Yeah, Mr. Parker, you want to stand up, let us thank you for joining the History Commission, and we look forward to your service. See, we've got a few other appointments, and, you know, we're going to recognize you as we go through those appointments. So let's, thanks, Mr. Parker, for joining. History Commission, next item?
R-0933, a resolution reappointing Doreen Doye Weisner to the North Little Rock History Commission.
Move for adoption.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Parker here. Yeah, Mr. Parker, you want to stand up, let us thank you for joining the History Commission, and we look forward to your service. See, we've got a few other appointments, and, you know, we're going to recognize you as we go through those appointments. So let's, thanks, Mr. Parker, for joining. History Commission, next item?
R-0933, a resolution reappointing Doreen Doye Weisner to the North Little Rock History Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Do we have, is, do we have our commissioner here, Suzanne? Okay. But we thank for continued service and appreciate what we've, the enjoyment we've had and the contributions up to this point. Next item?
R-0934, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Suzanne Clemens Jackson to the North Little Rock History Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
We thank Suzanne. I know she's seated out here, and congratulations again for all of what you do, and condolences for being married to the fellow that you've been living with. Send John our regards.
Forty years.
And tell him, you know, it comes with great affection. You're welcome. Next item?
R-0935, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Len Carpenter to the North Little Rock History Commission.
Move for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Robinson?
Did I, did I skip you?
Have I forgotten a lot?
Sorry. I'm sorry, Robinson. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going so fast. I'm sorry.
Ms. Carpenter here. We sure do appreciate her, and she's at home. Thank you very much. Next item?
R-0936, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Dr. Kerry Hurd to the North Little Rock Arkansas Health Facilities Board, Bath and Health.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Ross? Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
R-0937, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Brookshire L. Banks to the North Little Rock Arkansas Health Facility Board, Bath and Health.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
R-0938, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Reappoint, a resolution reappointing Ron L. Oliver to the Library Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
R-0941, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to a license agreement with Sprint Communication Company for the installation of fiber optic lines in a public right-of-way.
Whoops, you missed one.
Did I miss one?
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forty.
Okay. R-0940.
Let's try that one then.
Okay. A resolution supporting legislation for a pilot observation trail grant program to be available to cities, counties, and nonprofit corporations.
Move for adoption.
Second. Yeah, this is pending legislation. I know that they were going to have a hearing. I think Representative Moore, who has been a friend for a long time, and obviously we like our trails, this is for a pilot program to allocate a certain amount of money. Alderman Height, do you remember how much that is?
Two million dollars, isn't it?
I think that's correct. So, you know, we would intend to communicate this as quickly as we can. I know we like our trails over here. With that, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
R-0941, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to a license agreement with Sprint Communication Company for the installation of fiber optic lines in a public right-of-way.
Move for adoption.
You got an amendment. All right, let's get a second.
Second.
All right, now, let's go ahead and do the amendment.
Move for...
I believe that's been passed around. Alderman Height moves that this legislation be amended by attaching...
A license agreement.
The license agreement...
Lib. A.
As amendment A. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
On the motion to amend. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
All right, now, let's get a motion to adopt as amended.
Or moved.
Second.
Questions, I know that the city attorney's office has been working on this for quite a while, so feel free to pose your question, and either I or Mr. Carter will be happy to respond. Yes, ma'am?
My question is, the current fiber optic poles that we have, the white Q-tip poles that are all over the city, the white PVC pipes with the orange on the top, are they going to be placed in these all over the city also? Because I have a really, I really, really do not like those white poles.
I don't think many of us do, but no.
That's not my understanding. If you want, I mean, and I remember that causing somewhat of a stir thinking back. If you want some restrictions put on there, I can communicate with Sprint and have some restrictions put on there.
Yeah, this is, this is a limited area, though. This is not certain...
It's pretty small. It's pretty small, but...
But we don't need any more of that in the city.
No, I don't disagree.
They were supposed to cut the other ones off, and they never cut them off either, so that's, yeah.
And we can go ahead and get that worked into the agreement. I can't really tell you exactly right now how we would do that, but if you want those restrictions...
Yeah, we don't want a whole lot of, we don't want any more visual above ground than we, than we have right now.
That is absolutely necessary.
Except for small, obviously, markers that would be, you know, somewhat visually unobtrusive. I mean, we understand some need for that, but, you know, that, to me, would be a minimal, and I don't know, maybe if you have a chance, I mean, obviously, this is not a top priority, but certainly a priority. If you can take a look at whatever franchise agreements that we have, you know, I don't think any of us like all those poles growing up all over the city, and if we've got any legs to stand on, help me draft a letter to ask them to review that, and certainly if any kind of, you know, trigger timeframe comes up, that we've got a chance to say something about that. You know, that, I think, surprised all of us.
Sure.
I know, I know this is off topic on what we're on, but also those poles, the PVC pipe is being broken off, and it's very dangerous, that jagged PVC pipe sticking. It's more dangerous than many people realize.
If you see any of that, let us know, and we'll try to see if we can incorporate that in a letter that we'll send to, I guess, SPC or AT&T.
AT&T, yeah.
Yeah, AT&T to point that out to them, and that could very well be a liability to them that they may want to try to address, and to the extent that we can encourage them to do it, then that's what we'd like to do.
Probably the best thing for us to do is to come up with some good language, get it into our franchise agreements, and then as they come up for renewal, we'll have that new language put in there.
Yeah, I don't see anybody that thought there'd be a three-foot pole sticking up, you know, above ground.
But, Mayor, I think they have both an obligation and statutory right by state law to mark their facilities for protection of those facilities, but I think all of our concern was that they marked them too well.
Right. Right.
And, and we were able to get some of those up. As a matter of fact, a large number of them up in both the Lakewood area and Overbrook and Indian Hills area.
We've been able to get them up. If anybody wants to identify where they are, then we'll certainly try to address them in any way we can, but we agree that, that those, I don't know how you can make those look very good.
They're not, they're not attached to anything.
Right. I've got this, I've met with the gentleman that works at AT&T that's responsible for those, and I've got his cell number if anybody wants it.
It may not be that number very long.
I try, yeah.
Well, we, good point, and, and I think we need to continue to work where those issues are remaining and try to, you know, if we've had some successes, maybe we can have some more. Uh, all right, we're back on fiber optic. I think there's a motion made, second to adopt as amended. Any other discussion? On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard.
Yes.
Uh, 0943, Alderman Height?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the desire of the city of Northern Rock to adopt a complete street policy.
I'll move for adoption, then I've got a comment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Height?
I've got a couple, there's a couple of members from Baca here tonight, Judy McDowell and Tom Isell, who have been working with me, along with yourself, Mayor, on, on the Bicycle Friendly Community Award for 2009, and today, we received word that our first part of our application was approved, so we can move forward with the second part. But in the first part of the application, it asked the question, does the city have a complete streets policy? And in order for us to answer that affirmatively, we needed to put some legislation in front of the city council to identify. This was 1904, this would be, this would be very easy to do. We can't go back 105 years and convert all of our streets into, uh, modes of, of streets that accommodate all forms of travel. So what we're doing in the future, any enhancements, any new streets, any improvements on streets, well, we're going to try to accommodate all forms of travel, whether it be automobiles, bicycles, pedestrians, transit, and freight, in a relatively safe environment on all the city's streets and highways in North Little Rock. And that's all this is, is just, is just kind of a mission statement, and it's a, are a policy that the city of North Little Rock wishes to have a complete streets policy in force for future development.
Questions? Do you want to, is Tom Isell here?
Tom's out there.
Tom, let me just add a postscript to what Alderman Height said, and I want to thank Tom Isell, along with several others, and you might, you know, want to identify those that you can recall. I know there've been a number of folks who've been meeting on Fridays that, Tom, if you want to come to the microphone, and, you know, Tom's been one of the principal drafters, and, and, and we certainly appreciate he's not a resident of the city until we may annex out in that direction.
I, I hope the city keeps expanding to the east. You like about three miles getting to my house, so I'll be a citizen in North Little Rock, too.
Well, we're working on it, Tom. In fact, we're going to add a little piece tonight, but that, I say we are, but that's going to be on the other direction, so we, we look forward to moving in, in your direction. But Tom has been extremely active in the bicycle community and has been a part of our drafting committee. In fact, it's his computer that, you know, we, and his secretarial services that have been principally used in, in the first submission. As I understand it, Alderman Height can go into greater detail, last year, Little Rock was granted an honorable mention in terms of their application. We applied, Mr. Voels and his office, you know, made a stab at it, and for that, we appreciate it, but, you know, really did not tell our story. There were a lot of things that we had done, and we deserved to, to, to be proud of, and yet, we didn't tell our story well enough. We, we, with the help of Tom and others, have been much better at it this year, certainly under the leadership of Alderman Height, who is extremely active in the bicycle community, and we very much appreciate his involvement. And if he wants to put any additions to that, Tom, feel free to make a comment or two, but we're extremely optimistic that we're going to, we're going to get a medal this year, and, and we, we're striving for the highest we can do, and, and we do have good things to tell. Tom, you want to make a quick comment or two?
Yes, sir. Talking a little bit about this particular type of policy, your philosophy about our transportation system, is we're looking to serve, this is not just about bicycles, it's not just about cars. This is for all of our citizens here in North Little Rock, whether you walk, you ride a bike, you drive a car, you drive a truck, that you can get out in your neighborhood and go where you need to go safely. Uh, there are some neighborhoods where you, people have to walk in the streets to go down to the corner store or the post office because there's, there's no sidewalks. We're looking for a safe place to raise kids, a safe place for our elderly folks, who may not, may or may not be able to drive anymore, to get where they need to go in our community. And we, we thank you very much for your attention, and we'd appreciate a favorable vote.
Charlie, anything else?
Just want to add that Robert Voels has been a tremendous asset in this process, along with a gentleman by the name of Bud Lomer. Excuse me, he works for the Arkansas Highway Department. Bud is real knowledgeable about, in keeping up to date with all of the things that are going on in the bicycle world. I don't know how many emails I get from Bud on a daily basis, but I, I have to stay up at midnight to read some of them, but John Barton, who's a resident of this city, David Holstead, Steve Bentley, Judy McDowell, Rob Lambert has attended a meeting or two back in, here recently. His work has prohibited him from doing so, to leave anybody out. Of course, the mayor, and, uh, we've had some of the department heads in, asked, you know, tell them, and ask them, and their help. We've got a lot of help from the police department, and they're in the process of doing an education course, of which Tom is going to, going to lead that, and then with the city employees are going to meet with Tom and do some bike ed in the future. And so, our committee hopes to, like, we get an award later this year, we hope it's gold in color, as opposed to just an honorable mention, but thanks to Tom's efforts, we've, we've crossed the first hurdle, and that's getting, just getting notified, I mean, recognized as far as our Part One of our application. I think that the League of American Bicyclists has recognized that we've put in a lot of effort, a lot of sweat equity, a lot of money, and a lot of time to convert or to make City of North Little Rock and the surrounding communities very bicycle-friendly, so...
Bicycle, pedestrian, other, you know, the streets are made for everybody.
Every citizen in North Little Rock ought to have equal access, equal service to our transportation system, regardless of how you get around this town.
And with your vote tonight, unless there's any other comments, questions on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard.
Yes.
Well, we can put in our Part Two that unanimously adopted by the city council.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, thanks very much to the council as a whole.
Thank you.
Be careful out there tonight, Tom.
Next item?
Uh, 0944, Alderman Ross and White?
Please call it.
This is a resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement with Marla Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering services for design and administration phases one and two of sidewalk improvements along Percy Machen Boulevard from Port, from Portion to West 33rd Street, 34th year, 2008 CDBG program in the amount of $26,255.65.
You want to go ahead and move for adoption?
Yes.
No, wait a minute, not for adoption. Yeah, that is a resolution, okay?
That's right.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I just want to say one thing, Ward One's already on the complete streets, and this is a sidewalk from Percy Machen down to Levy, so that area, that's what we're working on right now.
A good area, I think it's a great project.
I just need to make one correction, this doesn't come from Ward One drainage funds, it's from CDBG funds.
Right, okay, right.
Just want to make sure.
But Ward One is applying their CDBG funds towards this.
Right.
We need to make an amendment?
No. It says it's coming from CBDG funds.
It's saying that.
Yep. That's being Ward One.
Hang around, Mary Beth, not, not on this one, I'm going to ask you to come back in just a second.
Okay.
That amount to be appropriated from Ward One drainage funds, you need to strike that last clause probably, out of Section One.
Okay. Mayor, Mary Beth, I think we decided we do need to have some amending language. Ms. Ross?
Yeah, we do need to amend that.
Right, so what's your amendment?
Uh, said it'd be appropriated from Ward One drainage funds, from Ward One, or just from CDBG funds.
How do, what do you want to say, Ms.?
I think if you strike out that last...
Yeah, just strike the last clause, and I think we're fine.
That amount to be appropriated from Ward One drainage funds, strike that out, because it already says it's going to come from CDBG funds.
Right, I agree.
It's just going to...
All right, that's, Ms. Marshall, you got that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, Ms. Ross, is that your motion?
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to amend, Ms. Marshall?
Motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard.
Yes, move for adoption as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard.
Yes.
Uh, before we, while we're on this, let me, Ms. Bowman, will you want to come back to the microphone? We received how much more in CBDG?
Almost $204,000.
$204,000 in additional funding, that is a result of the stimulus bill that was adopted. In order to advance our opportunity to expend those funds, one of the requirements is they be expended in accordance with the plan. A plan requires a hearing and opportunities for people to make their wishes known. I assume this funding, additional funding, is spent in the same ways that the original CBDG funding would be spent.
They, they wanted to create jobs and to stimulate the economy, is what they're only thing they're telling us right now.
That, that is somewhat the overall umbrella. We're going to get some further instructions, but one of the things that we wanted to do to try to advance that, you know, is to go ahead and schedule the hearings. We're anticipating instruction, a little bit more clarification prior to the hearings. You want to talk about?
That is correct, and I do have a hearing scheduled for next Monday at 6:00 PM at the North Little Rock Boys and Girls Club.
Uh, is that the only hearing we have?
The only one, we, we have to have one, so that's the only one we have, at least, a citywide hearing.
Well, we're, we're going to have that, but we may have, we may have more depending on what the instructions provide, but that funding, we want to create jobs, and, you know, we want to try to be as responsive in a positive way to these funds and the umbrella that they are being distributed under. So, with that, you know, I just wanted to mention that as one of the benefits that we receive vis-à-vis the formula. Any questions?
We'll divide this the same way, by the four wards, I assume.
Pardon?
Divide it the same way by the four wards.
Well, we don't know.
Well, we don't know, it'll just be up to you guys, yeah.
Yeah, we'll just put it all in three then.
If that's where we create the most jobs, that might, who knows?
That would be.
I mean, it's, it'd be up to a majority vote of this council, and, and we're going to do our best to create jobs.
It's going to be a separate than our normal CDBG funds, they're going to keep It's gonna be a separate than our normal CBDG funds, they're gonna keep it as a separate fund, everything's gonna be accounting will be separate than just saying we got additional amount of money.
So, you know, so there may be some real opportunities, but that's the way we're gonna try to look at it.
Maybe we could combine things with one and three.
Well, one of the things, if you produce jobs, jobs don't say you gotta live next to the plant, you know, so, you know, and in fact, obviously, jobs don't say you have to live in North Little Rock, but the production of, of jobs is a real key to what we...
And it may be just workers, you're creating jobs for construction, you know, streets or whatever, so they haven't really defined what that means exactly.
Alderman Robinson, then Ross.
Well, I was just gonna ask if the money can be used for more than just sidewalks and streets, you know, I was thinking maybe some home repairs or what have you.
Well, there's some other funds available for weatherization that we can go after, and there's some NSP money, and that's for, only for foreclosed property, but we've got, I've been working with about five nonprofits to pursue some of those funds, so.
Except for there's a first...
Alderman Ross and then Gaines.
Can these funds, can they be added to a project such as the one, the sidewalk on personal, you know, that we weren't gonna have enough funding this year?
I, I would think so.
But it could be added, we're possibly gonna finish much sooner, okay.
Okay, all right, now, as, as you can tell, there are plenty of opportunities, and we'll try to do the best we can to be as beneficially responsive with those dollars as possible.
And so many needs.
And so many needs.
We could do something, then, we could also do something if we wanted to with, with Alderman White and Ross, if we wanted to come down, even though that's not in our ward, that's those, there's a lot of sidewalks needed right down there on their side, too. So theoretically, if we wanted to, we could just add money on that side.
Take your money and put it into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and remember...
There's a lot of different ways of doing this, right?
Well, well, also remember that we have some funds that we set aside this year for sidewalks, so I'm sure that, you know, we're, we're working and trying to create that plan that, you know, can be as citywide comprehensive as, as possible, so, you know, we, we don't, and, and while we're talking about this, I've got a couple of other items, but I, you know, I can't go on without, I mean, when we're talking about spending for capital stuff, you know, we are, you know, this morning, two days after the last council meeting, we had a special budget staff meeting. Mr. Sisson has informed me, and I think most of y'all probably saw it in the paper, that we are somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200,000 a month down, you know, some months were worse than others in terms of our collections, and we've taken steps to try to reduce and, and ask every department head to reduce their budget by 5%. Most of them have been able to come up with a plan, that, that budget reduction will not get us everywhere we want, but it'll certainly get us on track to try to be as close to balancing as, as, as we, well, we, we're gonna balance the budget, I mean, it's not a question, it's just how much, you know, general operating funds on the, on the operational side that we, we have to, to do and, and how it may affect services. At this point, we have a modified hiring freeze, any replacements have to be authorized by our office, we also have, have the department heads submit, you know, things that they can do in terms of cutting their budget, so we haven't and don't plan on laying anybody off, but we're certainly gonna be very judicious when it comes to both promoting and, and replacing vacancies. Now, we do have some light out there with the police department, somewhat with the fire department, in terms of grant money that's available, the cops program was funded, I believe a little over a billion dollars, and we're in the process of making application to try to not only replace some of the unfunded positions, but to perhaps deal with some of the vacancies that we have presently, we're gonna pursue eligibility that we may have with that regard, and, and so, you know, we, we may be able to get some help from the federal government with respect to police. I know we're gonna pursue and probably bring back to the council a movement toward engineering on our fire station that we're looking to, to try to get under construction this year on the east end. There is $210 million available federally for fire station construction, and we certainly wanna be in line for that. One of the other things that, you know, we may be considering, and, and I know that that was one of the things that, that we had, that has given us a very, we're very, feel very likely that we'll be receiving somewhere around $1.1 million for the roundabout that we've been working on down at the end of Pike Avenue in the Barron Cross area. Now, the total cost of that's 1.6, so they did not, you know, they would not fund, there's about $300,000, $400,000 in landscaping, we probably spent somewhere around $200,000, $300,000 in engineering, and that, that we spent in engineering without having the final plan in place for how we were actually gonna do it, is one of the things that really benefited us by being able to advance that project on this shovel-ready approach. I know that, that I had a meeting with Metro Plan today, we're trying to devise a, a consideration on how we can be as, as proactive as possible, and one of the things that we're being told, and that is, if you, if, if in all likelihood, you're gonna have to pay for your engineering, and so if there are projects that we wanna do, we might, we'll say spec some projects with regard to engineering, and to try to go ahead and, and maybe advance that aspect of it without really knowing exactly how we were gonna pay for them, because those are the kind of projects that, that, that at least, in several instances, we ought to have a few plans on the shelf that we can pull off when funds become available. So, we're gonna be considering that, if there's something that y'all have that's particularly, you know, beneficial, I know one thing that I'm thinking about is, is the, the overpass on East McCain, that's probably about a 10 or 12 million dollar project overall, but that's the overpass that, you know, goes over Union Pacific Lines on, on East McCain that would really, I think, advance, you know, the benefits in that area, but there, there very well may be others in terms of engineering, so, you know, I, I just wanna give you a little bit of the flavor of what we're hearing, and that is that we may, you know, we may wanna consider specking some engineering at our own cost and have them in line for, you know, projects that would be ready to go, and, and that's one of the things I think you're gonna see at the next council meeting is, you know, is both, you know, engineering and, and planning, you know, for the fire station out east, we're gonna try to move that as fast as we can to see if we can access that $210 million and make one of those million come to us and help us build that fire station.
I mean, Mayor, would, we have, we want to spec out something on High Street, and so, and we may call you tomorrow, just see what, what it would cost, the engineer would be, that would be something to move on, it's very important to both of us, and is that how we do it, just contact you and your office?
Yeah, I mean, you can contact me or, or Mr. Voels and describe the project, so he can, he can, you know, be a little bit, uh...
He knows the project, he's got it down.
He's got it down, well then...
Thirty-eight years, they've won a favor, so, speaks it up, knocks the eyes, okay.
That's, that's one of the things that we're certainly gonna consider.
Let me ask you this real quick, too, then, a lot of people ask about this, too. If, there are submitted areas in North Little Rock, you know, we just put one downtown, wastewater treatment plant, there's some folks out there on Sunset we've been talking to, off and on, if, can part of this money, if there was enough, be built and used for sewer treatment for people in the city of North Little Rock that don't have it right now? I would assume it could be if we wanted to be, and part of that money go that way.
You know, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the parameters might be, but the answer is, I mean, you know, we certainly will consider, I mean, you know, our, our major challenges over the next year, maybe two years, and, and hopefully, you know, we'll find some mistake that's been made by the Department of Finance Administration, that's really difficult to do, but, you know, on the operation side, we are, you know, we're gonna watch our Ps and Qs real closely, but on the capital side, we do have a little bit of flexibility, but the operation side is one that we're, we're, you know, being challenged by being virtually the only city in, in central Arkansas that appears to have gone down as much as we have in sales tax collection, and we, you know, have a few guesses, but we hope we find where, you know, DFNA made a mistake, but I don't know if that's something we can bank on, but, you know, the answer is, yeah, we'll take a look at...
Okay, both of, okay, thank you.
All right, so we've talked about the budget, we've talked about stimulus, and then Mr. Mike Smith, when you want to, if you wanna come this direction, if you're over there, if you're not here, I want you to give us a little update on the rock slide here in just a minute, but before we do that, let's go ahead and go to the next item.
00919, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance accepting annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled a crow annexation to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and making crow annexation a part of the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Go ahead and take it third reading, and then I'll get Mr. Voels to explain it.
I'll move, we spin the rules place on second reading.
All right, second.
Do we need a public hearing on this?
Second.
Good.
Not that I'm aware of, on annexations, we post...
No, because the, the hearing was held at the county.
Right.
Okay.
County judge holds the hearing on this.
All right, motion made, was there a second on this motion to spin the rule?
A second.
All right, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled a crow annexation to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and making crow annexation a part of the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move, spin the rules place on third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
So on the legislation.
All right, who's, any council member?
Here.
All right, Alderman Gaines.
I had a correspondence, I was late, I was gonna pass out tonight, but I guess it's fortunately, they didn't pass it out, because I have to get with the city attorney and work out ramifications of this dumpster ordinance. The business people in, in my area have taken me to woodshed on this thing, they really have, so, I'm gonna get with you, Mr. Carter, and so we can do, obviously, we cannot repeal it like this, I don't have the votes for it, but there are things we can do to, to change it, make it softer on who's left, and I just need, would like for you very much to figure out how to do that. Does that make sense?
I think so, I just think we need to sit down and put our heads together and see what we can come up with.
'Cause I'm gonna bring it for a vote to repeal it, if we can't do something, kind of win, lose, or draw, and just let everybody vote how they will, and just see what happens, because it's just, I think, too much money, got, the implementation of it was not what we want, what I thought was gonna have. We're having a, March 19th, 6:30, at the Pat Hayes Center, the Veterans Memorial Committee will meet again, and we wanna let the people in the third ward know, Mr. Baggett and I, too, that they'll start striping the streets in Levy, Levy area tomorrow, the ones at Donovan Bradley, Pike Avenue, around through there, we appreciate, I'll get a compliment very often, give a compliment very often to Tim Marvin, but, so really grateful, appreciate for that, and the lights, if anybody in that third ward has any problems with lights with the crime area, the crimes going on, we wanna be sure and, and be sure and mention that, so be sure and call us if there's something on with that. That's all I have, and on the meetings, I do wanna, I know Mr. Height and I have talked about having a, a meeting on this dumpster, but this thing, it's $2,000, too much for people, and I want, if there's any way to remotely remove this, repeal it, wanna do that, but I mean, I'll attend the meeting and play around with that and all that, but I would just wanna...
Let me, let me make a couple of quick comments, so, one is that, you know, I've heard, you know, I don't know that I've heard directly, but I've heard indirectly, that some people are saying that we're out there enforcing that dumpster ordinance, and if we are, then somebody needs to point out to me who it is, because, you know, based on what the council's action was two weeks ago, there's a moratorium in effect until July 1st. It was my anticipation, and I think y'all heard me comment, that we try to come up with some legislation, you know, that will say, perhaps might be a consensus that is sensitive to some of the comments that we've heard, and of course, Alderman Gaines, you know, just mentioned some with particular reference to his ward. I know Alderman Height spoke with me a little earlier about, you know, the dumpster ordinance, the screening ordinance, and, and what we might be interested in, in trying to do, so, you know, I told Alderman Height that absent any legislation from the council, then I'd be happy to appoint a task force, that, you know, he indicated he'd be willing to chair, and you, you know, you're certainly willing, if you want to do that, as a co-chair, or, or any council member, obviously, would be welcome, it would be fully anticipated that this task force would be, operate under, you know, freedom of information, that it would be one that would notify the, the media, and so at this point, you know, I would just be inclined to, and again, Alderman Gaines, if, whatever part you might wanna play, I'd be very happy to, Alderman Height indicated he'd be happy to chair a mayor's task force on this, and the only way I'm, reason I'm calling it the mayor's task force is so I can do it, and if we wanna do legislation, that's fine, it can be a council task force, or, or anybody that's, you know, interested, you know, to serve, I know Alderman Height, you wanna make some comments, 'cause I think we're opening the door in whoever might wanna be either a part of it, or...
I've, I contacted Alderman Gaines a week or so ago and asked him if he'd wanna participate in it, and that, and any of the other council, I, I think Alderman Ross knows that I'm forming a task force, but any of the council members that want to participate in this task force is welcome to do so, we haven't held our first meeting yet, I'm still in the process of getting in contact with a couple of more people that have spoken positively and negatively about the dumpster issue in North Little Rock, but what my task force, I intend for it to do, is to deal with the dumpster issue from 360 degrees, not just the legislation that Alderman Gaines introduced that we passed last year, but just to deal with the dumpster issue, and I've got all of the companies that service the dumpsters here in North Little Rock, WCA Waste Management and AVI, have all, all the managers of that, of those three kinda have agreed to serve on my task force. The meetings are gonna be held, Terry Hartwick at the Chamber of Commerce has volunteered his boardroom, or the big conference room upstairs if we need to, for us to hold our meetings, and so I've got, I'm in the process now of getting everybody's, that wants to participate in it, getting their email address or phone numbers, so I can contact them, and then I look for us to have a meeting, and probably within the next two weeks or before the next council meeting, hopefully, we'll have, start our first meeting, but I want to, it's, it's, it's basically, we're just gonna deal with, with this issue from all sides in North Little Rock, and I'm gonna hear from everybody that has input, and we're gonna hopefully come up with, with something that's gonna be a win-win-win situation for everybody involved, and Alderman Robinson, Alderman Robinson, you're welcome to serve on that committee, too, if you'd like, but...
I have someone I'd like to recommend for that committee.
Okay, that'd be fine. Let me just suggest that we do this, and, and like I, like I mentioned, I, you know, I told Alderman Height that I'd be happy to ask him to serve as chairman, and, and what I would think that we might wanna do is each of you, you know, either if you're interested in serving, or, you know, if, if you know someone that is, I think we need to probably have some structure to the committee, so, you know, I'll listen to Alderman Height to, to give me some direction, to have some number and have some, you know, some designation so that we could have some reasonable order to that, but outside of that, I think it would be open to pretty much, you know, whoever's interested, at least up to a certain limit.
Right, you know, I wanna keep it with, down to a reasonable number, but I would hopefully, maybe that someone from the clerk's office would participate in the meeting in our, on our committee, just as more or less as a scribe, we need someone to take minutes, and I don't do shorthand, so, and of course, the press is gonna be invited when we do have that meeting, so, but, y'all know how to get in touch with me, if y'all have anybody that you know of, or if you wanna serve on that committee, get in touch with me in the next few days, and we're gonna hopefully get this train out of the track here just as soon as possible. In the, in the meantime, what can we do about the dirt, Jason, I'm sorry, might catch you off-guard, over and over, I'm getting the calls, why, Carrie, aren't you doing, Alderman Gaines, why aren't you doing something about the dumpster, for example, the largest business in the third, well, third and fourth largest business award has the hardest-looking dumpsters of all, you know, there's some that we can do about them now, they're nasty, they're, I mean, people present over here on one hand, cleaning up, building, doing like they're supposed to, but playing by the rules, and they watch the fourth or fifth largest company award have grease out there outside their store, they're having, they're just crappy.
Right, and I think what you're talking about is two separate issues.
I am, yeah.
Right, because where we've brought the dumpster ordinance before, for the discussion that's, you know, continuing, you know, to a task force, that's more of a zoning-type ordinance, where we're saying, how's your business oriented as to a piece of land, how are you gonna have, you know, dumpsters and keep that screened, this, you know, it's zoning-type legislation. I think what you're talking to right now is, is more of nuisance, you know, police power legislation, it, it's not as much as how business oriented, it's just that we don't like meths in our community, and that, that is a nuisance, it's not nice to look at, and it's prohibited by our ordinances, there's nothing to stop that from being enforced, it can be enforced.
Can be now.
Let me, let me, I mean, to the extent that we have rules on the books that would give us an opportunity to address that, so why don't you, you know, if you'll notify, you know, our, our code office, and then notify my office, too, in one joint...
Get after them.
...communiqué, and, and then I'll get them to report back to me and to you about what the situation is, and whether we can address it, and if so, what we're doing.
Okay, 'cause I want to encompass, too, the nasty, some of the nasty-looking dumpsters, Alderman Height, or...
Pardon me?
Some of the dumpsters are really nasty-looking, we need to address that, too.
Well, yeah, that's... Yeah, give us some, give us some addresses and places, and...
Do some pictures, and we will...
And code know, and we'll find out what, what we can do and, and what we will do.
One of the comments that I've already heard, and I'm not gonna tell you specifically, but I've already heard comments from, from all three of the companies that service dumpsters, is that, is they have some ideas about how to help clean up some of these dumpster sites, and they've also got ideas about what their company has done in other cities about this same issue, so I'm willing to listen to them, I mean, it's, I mean, it's not gonna be a, like I said, it's, it's gonna be a win-win-win situation, but, you know, I, to, to listen to the companies that service these dumpsters about some of their ideas about what they've done in other cities, I think I'm gonna be all ears.
Alderman Height, I hope your optimism proves to be accurate, with, with, with the potato that this has become, I don't know how, you know, if everybody finds a win, we're, we're gonna be, you know, you're gonna be a Solomon.
That's my objective, that's my objective.
Good luck, I hope you can do it.
And Mr. Voels, when I, Mayor, and Mr. Voels, too, I should've, I should've said this two weeks ago, for, for some reason, still, someone from your office came this week and asked the people on MacArthur, and they showed me this, this, the sign saying we didn't have all this done by July, July 9th, and that's what stirs people up, it makes them unhappy, you may not have known that, but I know, you know, we talked about it and talked about it, and the guy that does it is probably not as smooth and as charming as you are when he comes out there, you know what I mean? And he, he angers people, yes.
Like I said, we're not, we, we authorize a moratorium, if anybody's out there trying to enforce anything, you know, they just need to get a name and let us know.
I got the name in a minute, but I promise y'all give it to you.
Yeah, this will give us another opportunity to get the word out, the moratorium says that companies need to supply a plan of how they're, what they're thinking about doing by July the 1st.
No, no, I don't think so, um, excuse me, Mr. Carter, my legislation just did a moratorium, we hadn't done anything about supplying a plan, or have we?
No, all we did is put a moratorium.
That's right, sorry, Mr. Voels, uh, now, what I said was, and I will get this clarified, and if I'm in there, then I'll, will look at our records, but I did say that we were going to perhaps submit legislation that would do that, now, we never did, because it became a discussion by the council in terms of submitting legislation that would require a plan to be submitted by July 1st, that part was in discussion from the floor, it never became, to my recollection, a part of the, the moratorium. Mr. Carter?
I think the moratorium that's in effect right now is for six months.
It's just said for July, was it six months or July 1st?
I think it's July 1st.
That's what I thought, so I don't think we did anything in addition, other than just simply the moratorium, you know, we'll double-check that, but I don't think so. Alderwoman Robinson?
Even though there's a moratorium on the legislation that was passed last year, there's not a moratorium on the legislation that was passed in 2004, so if the dumpsters are dirty, or they're obnoxious, or whatever, we can deal with that.
Right, that's correct.
Remind Alderwoman Robinson, that legislation in 2004 does not have any penalties on there, there was, there's no real meat to that ordinance, there's no, there's no penalties, and there's no dollar amounts for any fines.
We might need to add...
We might need to add it.
I think we could.
But, you know, we'll, we'll double-check on the plan part, and then I'll take any executive action I need to do to straighten out what my memory and what our rules say. Anything else from any council members? Microphone is open, who's the, who's, who do we have?
We have, we have Bobby Taylor, Bill Yates, Wayne Tombs, and James Oren.
All right, we got four of you, you know, y'all are welcome to come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name is Bobby Taylor, Mayor, I'm still on this code enforcement, and I've been listening to y'all tonight about these dumpsters, it seemed like you kinda got between a rock and a hard place, and don't know how to get out of it, but I figure you will, and I figure it'll come out probably for the best, and that's what I'm looking for, for the code enforcement. Is code enforcement backed off because they want to wait and see how y'all come out on these dumpsters before they do anything? There's a few out there that would, cleans up their yards, cleans up their building and stuff like that, and the others don't, and some of these people wonders why, there can't be something done about it when they clean up their place and then look down the street or drive through it, and it's not cleaned up, so, Mayor, I want to make sure that y'all didn't misunderstand me, when I said I was thinking of staying on this till something comes out of it for the city of North Little Rock, either the code comes alive and goes back to work, or the good Lord called me home, I don't know which one's gonna come first, but I'm gonna be here, and I want to make sure that y'all understand what I said, and I thank you, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, we appreciate you. Three more, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Bill Yates, it's an honor to be here tonight...
on this till something comes out of it for the city of North Little Rock, either the code comes alive and goes back to work, or the good Lord called me home, I don't know which one's gonna come first, but I'm gonna be here, and I want to make sure that y'all understand what I said, and I thank you, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, we appreciate you. Three more, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Bill Yates, it's an honor to be here tonight to represent over four hundred North Little Rock citizens, with this petition to present to the chairman of the North Little Rock Veterans Advisory Committee, Mr. Kerry Gaines, it is their wish that this memorial monument be placed at fifty-five oh one MacArthur Drive.
Go ahead and hand it to the city attorney and Mr. Mister, you know, he'll get to Mr. Gaines there, thank you, Mr. Yates. Microphone's open. Uh, we had several others, I think, all guests are-
Mayor, Alderman, I'm Paul Goodman, and I support this, what Bill is talking about, and the location, because if we put it there, we're going to have thousands of people from all over the United States seeing that, and they're going to say, well, these people do care about the veterans, what they did, they want to honor them, and we have not forgotten about it, because we have people come in every day to work there, we have people to come from all over the United States to train at Camp Robinson, Camp Pike, and they will see it, we have numerous people come to Burns Park, they will see it, and if we put it down on the river, there would be a few people see it, but unfortunately, so many of those people down there, they don't really care, they don't care how they got their freedom, they just look at it and walk on, and I strongly urge you to consider that location, because it will be seen for, by thousands of people, and also, if you wanted to, out on the interstate, you could place the sign out there, historical marker, give them directions, how to get over there, but I urge you to consider that, thank you.
Microphone's still open.
Good evening, first, I would like to agree with Mr. Gates, I feel it should be placed where he originally wanted it, he started the project, let him have his way, and the gentleman was just up here, you need to come to the next Thursday night meeting and let your wish be done. Mr. Gaines, Mr. Baggett, can I announce about what we're gonna do with our money for Levy project? Okay. The Neighborhood United for Levy has a committee, I don't think they've met yet, but they want to take some money they've earned and do something nice for the city, so anyone that's in the Levy area, I'll give you a phone number, you can call, leave your name and number, and we'll call it, someone will call you back about suggestions, that number will be three seven three eight seven one one, three seven three eight seven one one. Next, I would like to congratulate the North Little Rock Sewer Department, wastewater, they had sewer on top of the ground, and they immediately got out and saw about it. Also, I'd like to congratulate them on getting down on another situation this morning, but we keep on having that problem in this area where the sewer backs up, there's about four houses tied to it, and since one of our, uh, citizens is on the low end, he gets the slush, and the city doesn't wanna clean out his sewer after they get through, they take care of the main trunk line, but they didn't write for this party to have to get a sewer ride and clean out his, 'cause it all backs up, 'cause he's on the low end. Third thing I'd like to comment on, Avon Phillips, Phillips Wrecker, I called him several times, he had a truck, which he has the right to park that truck on the street because it's an emergency service, but it was parked in such a manner, it could cost someone their life, and Mr. Gaines, I think you still have the management, anger management, I wish Jimmy Phillips could go to it, and I'll pay for it, if you've heard terroristic threatening from him, you'd understand why, but I want to congratulate the gentleman that works for Phillips Wrecker, that took it on himself to make sure that truck was parked in a safe condition, he parks half of it in the yard, and a portion of it on the street, that means you can see around the curve, and when you have the little children playing right beside it, you're not up on them before you see it, but Junior would not return a call, and Ava, and Jimmy wanted to do terroristic threatening, it was suggested by a policeman, I turned that in, but I ignored it, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you very much, is there a motion?
Quick move.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I, I, uh, real quick, Mike Smith, we had a rock, we had a parcel slide today, I thought I'd, I know Alderwoman Ross and, uh, and White are extremely interested in this, it's certainly in their ward, but, but obviously all of us have some effect to it, uh, North Park Mall, uh, and behind, uh, very briefly, we've advised two property owners that we felt it was unsafe, uh, we've retained a, a consulting engineer, uh, we've been monitoring on a daily basis, uh, we've had continual movement, although it's slowed considerably over the last week, uh, up until obviously, you know, we had some significant movement today, our advice, uh, remains the same, we're developing an email list as well as a notification list, so that we can ensure people know whatever we know, when we know it, uh, and we've been trying to keep folks up to date as best we could, uh, and Mr. Smith, you wanna give us a quick little report on today?
A fairly moderate amount fell this afternoon, uh, wasn't any surprise, it, it fell about half the alley, uh-
Not, not just a portion of half the alley?
A portion of half the alley, yeah, uh, yeah, a portion of half the alley, uh, the, there's still some more to come down, uh, the, the part that fell today was actually what we call a pretty good failure, because it fell right in place, and it tends to stabilize what was behind it, so, uh, that wasn't a bad, uh, failure today, but there's still more to come, and we don't know when, it could be tonight, it could be two days, it could be two weeks, it could be two months, but I think that's probably the timeframe.
Okay, we, we wanna try to do our best to keep folks up to, up to speed, uh, as well as we can, and that's why we're gonna try to, even if we don't have anything to tell them, that's some news to them, so we're gonna do our best to, to try to be as informative and as, uh, open as we can with what we're doing, uh, we've even thought though, unless movement accelerates, uh, we've been doing it on a daily basis, but we're probably gonna stretch that out a little bit more, because of the very slow, slow movement that we've been experiencing. Okay, all right, now to hear a motion.
A move.
Second.
On the motion to adjourn.
Ross-
Yes.
White-
Yes.
Taylor-
Yes.
Robinson-
Yes.
Gaines-
Yes.
Baggett-
Yes.
Height-
Yes.
Yes, 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 Richard said yes.
Yes.